Couple of things tonight to talk about, probably the big one is the budget calendar and priorities. Just to kind of get things rolling, we've been working a little bit internally to start the process. But I wanted to kind of give you all an update on what I was proposing as a calendar. And you can tell me you want to spend more time, you can tell me you want to spend less time. But the more important part of the discussion is talking a little bit about some of the budget priorities itself. So, you know, tonight, kind of just high level, what we might be looking at for next year. July's work session on the 22nd, I'm hoping to have a good, healthy discussion about our capital improvement plan. And then, end of September, we'll distribute kind of a draft of a budget that you guys get to then take over for the next four meetings. And get to a point where sometime towards the end of November, you're finalizing a budget and we're adopting it at the beginning of December. So we have a bunch of initiatives on the docket for next year. And the question is, what else is out there? But right now, you know, we're working on the affordable housing piece, the initiative. We've got the GoCo grant, community, uh, uh, community park rebuild, which we've got some initial meeting set up for some of the outreach that we have to do. Hopefully sometime in 2025, we'll actually be constructing some improvements to the park. Obviously, we've got the continuation of the water treatment plant, which is taking up a lot of our time across the organization. We are moving into, uh, the design, you know, the 30% design phase for the pedestrian bridge. We're going to start working with that quite a bit more. We're going to be back in front of you relatively shortly to hire a real estate individual that can purchase property. We have to do the property purchases through a process that CDOT has set up. And there's a very specialized group of people that deal with that. Think dollar sites. So that's, that's going to take a fair amount of our time. We're also going to be in the process of starting to try to put together the funding stack for that in terms of coming up with the dollars to actually construct the, the bridge. We've got the Grand Avenue reconstruction. We're likely going to have a couple of carryover projects from this year. Public Works Director Lundin can talk a little bit about it. We've run into a bit of a snag with the pedestrian crossing at the post office in terms of what we're going to be able to do there and what it's going to cost, thank you, CDOT. So we're going to be looking at some alternatives there. Obviously, the Home Avenue project was much more expensive than what we had anticipated for this year. So we're kind of moving around some chairs to see what we're going to be able to accomplish and what might have to get carried over into next year. We do have a pretty large initiative and I, you know, Chief can talk a little bit more. We sent him to a, a conference on police stations, constructing new police stations. He came back with a lot of information, we're going to be back in front of you. I think we're planning on next month to talk about space needs and what we need to do. It's likely that we're probably not in a position where we're going to be doing anything with this building this year other than the windows and the front door, simply because what we had designed got very much more intensely involved with engineering, structural engineers, et cetera. And our costs ballooned well beyond what was budgeted. So it got to the point where we talked internally and you guys can tell us that we're half baked, but if we're going to spend that much money on this building as potentially just a Band-Aid for the next few years, it probably doesn't make a lot of sense to do that. We may have to do some things to try to improve some space use in the building, but it's certainly not going to be as grandiose as what we had, had initially looked at. Obviously, we also have the wastewater treatment plant improvements that we're going to have to start planning for. Those aren't due for 2030, I think it is.
Right.
But 2000, believe it or not, 2030 is kind of right around the corner when you think about what we're going to have to do. So we're going to start that process and then we've got the continuation of the broadband initiative. Those are the kind of the big things that we're working on right now. I'm, you know, you, I've, I've said before that I'm working within that Colorado River Valley Economic Development Partnership to frame that out a little bit, but that's kind of singular on my part. But, so there's a lot going on. And so the question for you guys is, what other bold initiatives are out there that perhaps we need to address and get in front of?
You had mentioned initially, Jim, about doing special lines, special fund to save up for police cars. Special, are you guys working on that? Like fleet vehicles and?
We have, we have started to look at whether creating a fleet account would be beneficial in terms of also looking at, is there a better way for us to finance our fleet purchases as opposed to the process that we're going right now? The, uh, you know, we, we, one of the sessions at CML this past week was about fleet and how best to handle our fleet. Believe it or not, for a community our size, we have a relatively large fleet. When you think about the fact that we are, we've moved into this role or this position where the officers are each, you know, you know, granted a car basically that they're taking home. So our fleet has grown significantly. Our public works fleet is relatively large as well. And then we have a couple of administrative vehicles. So there may be a better way for us to manage our fleet purchases and our fleet maintenance that we'll, you know, we'll be looking at as we go forward. But yeah, that's something that we will look at. I don't know that it would be part of our next year's budget, but it is something that we have kind of in the back of our minds. So I don't know if any of the board members have any, you know, big things that we should be looking at. I know I've had some conversations individually with a couple of you in terms of some broader global, you know, regional type efforts that we might want to get involved in. Question is thrown off to you guys.
Sorry, I'm going to go again. You had a meeting with, they have that from humanity, did that meeting happen?
I have not had a meeting.
Not yet, okay, okay, got it. Because I'm thinking about the property across the street from, uh, from the town hall. That's kind of high top priority to start looking into what we can potentially do there because it's kind of coming up between the citizens quite a bit. Like a couple of citizens have already mentioned it and it's coming up as a concern.
I would say we, that all gets rolled into the affordable housing discussion as part of a global solution. As, you know, we're going to look at that over the next year. And that would hopefully trigger what, you know, what's needs to be done? What are the needs? What, how are we going to do it? Who are we going to get involved, et cetera?
I know I owe you the, um, the Mass Transportation Group that was meeting previously. I will make sure that I get that forwarded to you so that we can reopen that dialogue. It ended last year, early last year, when it was given to Nathan Lundquist, who works for CDOT now, he's a former rifle guy. It got to funding and money talk and he said, let me get back to you.
And that was a year ago.
And here we sit. But we want to reinitialize that. I know, I think I mentioned this last meeting when I was at the, um, the center opening in Glenwood for Mine Springs. The, the mayor and one of the trustees from Carbondale were there. They were interested in getting it restarted. But the mayor was like, I can't really do it because we're already paying members of RAFTA. And if you guys want to join or whatever the strategy is, it needs to be brought up by someone over in Western Garfield County if you guys want to do it. So it's on us.
Okay.
And I was just thinking, also coming from that presentation, budget one-on-one, they just gave me a good idea. If we are not doing this already, if we could have the, um, the budget amounts for each fund for the last two years and then the proposed budget for next year. If we could have an extra sheet for each fund so we can look at if we are way off on some funds, which we may not be historically, but as a board member, I think that would be beneficial looking at it that way. That would be excellent.
Do we use more years in light of the pandemic? Those years budgetarily may not be normal.
We are looking 2022 and 21?
I'm just asking out loud because of the recency of it, it may have skewed the budget, either the budget planning and/or the budget utilization due to factors beyond our normal range.
To get away from the pandemic, you don't want to go pre-pandemic and it's such a different landscape now than then that I don't think it'd be accurate. Cause you'd have to go back before 2020. If you want to, it would have been our sales tax, everything is completely different now than it was then. It would be, maybe just a whole bunch more numbers for not a whole lot.
Yeah, you'll, you'll see in our budget, you'll see, you know, the audited from 22, projected for 23. And, well, I'm sorry, audited for 23, projected for 24 and, you know, what our estimate is for 25. If you would like the 22 numbers in there contrasted as well, we can work on providing those numbers.
Do you guys think?
It wouldn't hurt to have 22 in there as well.
Uh, talking about audited amount, that was something else that was suggested. If I have just come back about six or seven months ago, so I don't know if we are still doing the audit presentation by the auditor annually, either via being person or remote. I'd like to request us to, whenever the audit takes place, if we could have that presentation take place. I think that could be a, a good tool for us to have to take a look into those findings as well.
Treasure Tucker could chime in, but I don't think we get our audit until sometime in the third quarter.
Third quarter, okay, so I'll just save my comments for later on.
And when our audit contract is up, we really need to think about getting an auditor that's going to get our audited statements done in the first half of the year, not the second half of the year.
It'd be nice to have it for the budget season and stuff.
It's budget season, but it's also, uh, if you're issuing debt, you're supposed to get your audit done within the first six months of the year. And there's, there's been some rumblings that the, um, requirement would be that the audit gets done even faster than that. Because even six months old numbers start to get a little stale. And it's a disclosure issue for any bondholders that they need to be able to see if something's going wrong with your finances. And so there's, this has been a federal discussion at the SEC and the MSRB, which is the governing, you know, kind of oversees municipal bonds to try to get audits done on a much more timely basis.
So after we get our audit this year, can we already talk to the auditor or interview a new auditor to?
Yeah, I, once the audit is done, I think that's when we need to have the conversation.
Okay.
And it may be that, you know, we can work with our existing auditor to, you know, speed things up, get it sooner. Or it may be something that we need to actually go out and do an RFP. And that's, you know, again, that's entirely up to you folks, but that may be what it takes to, to move us up on the calendar.
I think getting it moved up on the calendar definitely be a positive.
Can't hurt to try, even if we end up with the same auditor, at least they're on notice that we were looking at other options and they need to perform better. To me, that's just a healthy relationship with, with the vendor.
And I don't even want to say that they're performing poorly, I don't think we've asked for it to be sooner, so.
Right.
They need to perform better, we just need to, to change what we, our expectations are.
Get our time, get our timelines aligned.
And it's not just us changing the expectation, it's the MSRB and the SEC that's saying, hey, you got to get this information out sooner.
I think if we put it out that way, they, at least you would think that they would, and they probably aren't hearing that just from Silt if they're doing other towns, so they're probably expecting it. Or they're seeing it already, they know the conversation's coming.
I did request this year for us to have it done before June and it just, it has not happened. I've tried to stay on top of them and email them once a week saying, how's it coming? How's it coming? Last week, he emailed me, um, like our bank confirmations and things like that, but I still don't think it's going to be done before the middle of July.
Which is better.
That's still, yeah, it's still better.
Last year it was August or September before you had the presentation.
It was closer to probably October before, we had to do, uh, an additional extension.
Yeah, we just need to set some clearer expectations that they're not the right guys, then we, we find somebody else.
If they're able to achieve what we're looking for, yep.
How long is their contract for?
Uh, they're single years, correct?
It's yearly.
Oh, okay.
We haven't, uh, um, we've just been doing it on a yearly basis. For the last, I don't know, since Pam left, I believe. We've just been doing it on a yearly.
Last year, we had the audit presentation on November 13th.
Well, yeah, that's, that's really late.
Hard to course correct. Well, and, you know, last year it was a bit of an issue because you were in the process of issuing debt.
Yeah.
And the fact that that audit was so late, it wasn't the only reason, it wasn't driving necessarily the debt issue, but it was a bit problematic.
Yeah, because that's when we had asked him to separate out the water and the wastewater into two separate funds.
Two things that I would like to keep an eye on or keep pursuing at least, with AVLT, House Valley Land Trust, is the property to the west of the dog park that we had tried to get purchased before that just didn't, didn't work out.
That's across the street, down, kind of on the riverbank.
It basically would fold in with what we already have over there for the river preserve, but it wouldn't have to be all preserved, maybe possibly have some other usages.
But as soon as the funding didn't happen, it was like, well, we're done. And then AVLT moved on and purchased a bunch of other property through other means, so. And then it's probably still quite a few years off. But I believe it's Western Slope Materials, the next gravel pit down. That's eventually supposed to become DOW Town property.
Talking about that, now we talked about it, that, that may come to the town. DOW may not want it.
Want it, may come to the town, so.
Yeah, we talked about that during the tour.
We did talk about that during the tour, that it would be a, a very nice extension to the preserve.
The preserve, yeah, so I don't want to.
Or possibly some water recreation over those ponds or something like that, that's a little bit similar use, but not exactly the same as the river preserve.
Right, right.
I think we just, if we keep our interest in that high, then maybe it'll go to the right, right spot, so.
And Joe, for the river preserve, um, I was just talking to people I know in the area. They know, um, like ecology for the water, like plants that you can have in there that just goes well with the environment. And we have like specialists out there that look into plantation and what to have and whatnot. Are you, I, I don't know how else to explain, they usually like, um, aquarius specialist that they know.
Jonathan Rose is doing that, he's doing all the planting around the ponds now.
Okay, so we have somebody.
Valley Land Trust.
Yes.
So he's already doing the plants that grow good, don't need a lot of water. So the ponds go dry, they keep growing.
Those are the ones that I, I mean, they're large scale projects, but like you said, 2030 is going to be here and someone's going to be at the door going, DOW doesn't want this, who are you guys going? We're going to be, what do we do with?
We want to be figuring out that, yeah.
There's a plot of land, we need $40 million. Yeah, so, prior planning prevents something.
I have some thoughts on, um, economic development and I know it's other places in the agenda tonight, so I don't want to jump the shark. But, um, we've recently had conversations with the chamber, they were here, Larry was here, the new leadership, they're changing their sort of methodology. We've got the CRV EDP and I know they're working on stuff that's sort of multi-year, more strategic than operational. I'm wondering what the town can do for itself in terms of branding and marketing. And what, it's based on two anecdotes. So I was at my kid's dentist, maybe a month and a half ago now, and they're based in Glenwood. And the dentist was lamenting that his rent got jacked up and that he'd love to have a facility out here because, quote, "Over 75% of my staff lives between Newcastle and Rifle." And he also knows that his next thousand customers are out here. And, but he said, I, I don't know where I can possibly find a spot.
We have to build him one.
That was sort of part of my point, what facilities do we have available for businesses? And do we hope they find them via unicorn or some other magical means or?
This is one of the goals of the Colorado River Valley Economic Development Partnership would be to create an inventory that basically covers from Newcastle down to parachute of what's available. And, you know, and we don't have that right now. You know, the, the, the reality of an economic development, you know, office in the town, to staff something like that, you're talking $200,000, $250,000. With the partnership, we can spend a lot less money and basically get all the same bang for the buck. Yes, we're sharing, we would be sharing it with, with other communities, but it's part of that, you know, a rising tide lifts all boats. You know, even if a business goes in somewhere else, we might get some of the employees living in town or vice versa. We might get the business and some of the employees live elsewhere. But the whole idea is to get an inventory of, you know, raw land that's available, opens, you know, vacant storefronts, vacant office that is easily accessible to somebody that they can go to a website and say, all right, here's our, here's my options. Or, in the alternative, here's who I should contact at the, the Town of Silt to talk about, you know, what the town could do to help with an economic development initiative.
Yeah, and to me, that's more short-term strategy than waiting for.
It's a start, yeah.
CRV, like how are we branding and marketing ourselves from a commercial standpoint? If, if somebody else wanted to open a plumbing business or some other thing, can they open it in a garage here?
Yeah.
What's, what's, what's our elevator pitch for someone that wants to come here and start a new business? Do we even have one?
Uh, I would say right now we don't have one, except we're open for business, you know, which is a cliche. I think one of the initiatives.
We can't tell you how or where.
One of the initiatives that we're going to be talking about in the future is revamping our website.
I'm saving some air for that.
Okay. Well, I mean, we don't, we don't want to, you know, that's on the agenda tonight, so we'll talk about it.
Yeah, when I, and I was just thinking about, again, in terms of the CRV is making progress, the chamber is evolving their methodology and wondering, you know, what we can do to help rebrand and market ourselves. When, when, in my conversation with this gentleman who is the dentist, it was, he, he knows nothing about what Silt can do for businesses.
Right.
Literally nothing. And he's actively looking for a space.
And, and we have the ability to help, um, along the way. But it, it will take effort and it takes, you know, you know, there's a lot of options. I mean, I don't know how familiar you folks are with tax increment financing, which is like the one economic development tool that is afforded to Colorado municipalities. That's an option that we have that can help spur development. There's a, there's a cost to that because you're using the future tax revenues on a property tax basis most of the time. Sometimes, uh, organizations will throw sales tax in as well, but you're using future property taxes to help abate some of the cost to actually get a project off the ground. That's the one real option that we have out there.
And in conjunction with that, I've been thinking, we grow up, like grow organically, would like down the line, maybe not now, just having someone do just a plan, even if it's a mock plan of the expected way of what we imagined Silt would look like, just so we could have, like, you know, they have those planned cities. And I think there's advantage to that because you work towards a purpose of what would be the ideal vision. There is definitely a name for it, I'm not coming up. But would that down the line be beneficial for us to come up with a drawing board of what we imagined Silt would be like? And maybe the decisions we make would potentially like more be aligned with that vision and that picture. Because right now it feels like we're just, you know, uh, development will come, go to planning and zoning, we'll make a decision. And that's what I mean by growing organically, we are not, it's not the other way around. Like we have a vision, it's painted on a picture and hopefully the decisions that we are making is aligning with that picture.
Everything we're doing gets tied back through the housing initiative.
The master plan.
And the comprehensive plan update, I mean, that's going to be part of what we need to look at of, you know, what is it, what is it we want to be when we grow up? What do we want downtown to look like? Do we want three stories, four stories? Do we want two stories? What is it that we want and what are we willing to do? And that, that's kind of that focusing, at least for the downtown section, what we want, what it wants to look like. And how do we want to sprawl and how do we want to manage our growth? But that's, a lot of that's going to come out through the affordable housing and the ultimate, hey, let's look at the comp plan again and see exactly where we're going. And get some of that vision down.
Yeah.
I think there's also some entrepreneurial activities that I have a lot of peers that work in Denver that hate living in Denver. And now that it's 2024, they'd love to live out in a place like this. Most of them end up moving to Glenwood just because that, that seems to have the, the things that they need as, as business owners and technologists. And I think the broadband initiative is, is part of that. Redefining what our commercial spaces are going to be, setting up some public-private partnerships whereby many businesses go in on increased internet and we can provide it free to the public on Main Street, for example.
Right.
Those types of initiatives help bring more businesses to the floor. There, Colorado has a bunch of programs, one's called Startup Colorado. They do, um, new business startup sort of tutoring, mentoring. They've had successful ones in Durango. A friend of mine, Ram, just participated in one out in Frisco. They've done a bunch in Grand Junction. I think they did one at Rifle maybe four or five years ago. So have, having access to groups like that would be another thing whereby we're just letting people know that we're here instead of hoping they find us on their own.
Correct.
We're the proverbial tree falling in a forest right now for new business.
We also have to actively recruit.
And that's where it comes back to marketing, what's our brand?
Comes back to marketing, it comes back to the website, it comes back to the Economic Development Partnership. All this kind of wraps together in terms of putting our best foot forward as a place for a business to land.
Yeah. I had a few thoughts, I mean, just, you know, not, not, you know, smaller, on a smaller scale like that, you know? I mean, one of my thoughts was it would be nice to finish the, uh, Main Street sidewalk, at least on the north side. Because now we have a business down there, you know, you know, kind of between First and Third. You know, that's the one section of Main Street that isn't done. It would be nice to tie it into, you know, First Street and just get that done. And I know, you know, there's always, we'll wait for somebody to build a building there, you know, to, and have them do it. But I don't know, I mean, that could be another 20 years. It was just, it was just one of my thoughts to actually finish that, at least, at least on the north side. Then, you know, then people would have a nice roundabout way to walk. And, you know, just, just small things, like we have several dead-end streets that, that are still dirt. You know, it'd be nice to at least get them chip and sealed or something. And I know there's probably some infrastructure under them that may or may not need to be improved. But, you know, it, it would be nice just to at least get rid of all of these dirt streets. Just, you know, just eliminate potholes, it's easier to plow and stuff. So things, yeah, like that. And, you know, replace the sidewalk on Home Avenue here. Cause a few years ago, some of the really rough sections were, were pulled out. And it's just between Home, between Seven, or Sixth and Seventh Street. You know, it'd be nice to get, get that sidewalk finished, you know? And I had another thing and, and this isn't necessarily the town, but I don't know. Because when the power went out, you know, a couple of weeks ago, you know, it just kind of, kind of brought it to my mind, like XL Energy. Cause I've heard where, you know, XL Energy's oldest infrastructure is here in Silt. So how do we get XL Energy to up, upgrade their infrastructure? You know, gas, gas lines or electric and everything. And I know they're doing a lot of work in Glenwood right now, replacing lines. But, you, you know, it, it just, it just makes me wonder, you know, if this really, if it really is true and they do have the oldest infrastructure on their system here. I mean, what, what is their plan to actually do it? Are we going to get to the point where stuff just fails constantly before they, they do anything? Or is there some sort of proactive?
Well, right now, we are working with XL, like on our new project, like the Home Street.
Well, right now, we are working with XL, like on our new project, like the Home Street.
Uh huh.
That one, we're working with XL to replace their gas line.
Oh, okay.
We're going through there. And also, like the alley, there behind the old Tim's Tools.
Uh huh.
They put a new gas line in there.
Oh, good.
We tried to get them to get the power underground, but we didn't succeed in that.
Yeah.
We're trying to.
Oh, good, good. At least you're, you know, making an effort, but.
So like on that project, we had that open, did we put extra conduit in that alley? Like behind Tim's Tools, did we throw?
There's electrical conduit.
Extra conduit for, for broadband? Okay.
So there's like a two-inch conduit in there, and right now, we're just running our sign on it.
Okay.
There's room to pour, pull more wire.
To pull more. I think that's one thing we need to make sure we are doing when we open up these streets, is putting extra conduit. Because we're going to need, I mean, the broadband infrastructure. And conduit's cheap per foot.
That's true.
To just throw it in there and bury it. So we should be putting, you know, three, four different conduits. Because broadband's not going to jump in the same conduit as XL. So we can't just have one extra. We have to have multiple.
Yeah, I understand. We need to get with the utility companies so we know where to start and end those conduits for the future.
Yeah.
Like broadband, I need to get a contact for them, but make sure we have it underground. XL, we have contacts for them.
We talked about this last year during the budget cycle. Dig once.
Dig once, yeah.
If the ground's open, put everything you're going to need for 10 years in it. Even if you don't need it today.
Don't need it today.
I mean, it's, it's an educated guess.
And I, a lot of the contract, like XL and stuff, I think they'll help with. I mean, they'll furnish the conduit if we put it in the hole.
Yes, I believe they will.
So it's a little bit of extra man-hours to get it, get it done. But I think with all these street projects we're doing, we need to make sure we're staying on top of that.
Do you want to shift to the topic of?
Howling?
Taxes and fees.
Taxes and fees.
Not, not, can't go to housing yet. We need to, we need to stop at taxes and fees.
One can of worms at a time.
One can of worms at a time. So, as you know, we've got an election this fall, just a small one. We need to know by the beginning of August whether the Town of Silt is putting anything on the ballot. I bring this up simply because we know that the town doesn't have an excise tax on marijuana, and it doesn't have a cigarette tax. I think between the two of those, we're talking somewhere around $250,000 of revenue that's, we're not pulling in right now. That would go a long way to help fund parks and recreation if we so chose to spend the money that way. I bring it up, we can study it more as a question of whether that's something that the board would like to pursue. There's a lot of work that needs to be done between now and the time when we hold an election. You never really want to go to an election unless you know you're going to get a yes vote. It may be something that it becomes one of those big initiatives that we're going to work the next year on and go next fall. But it's something that we should probably discuss as to whether it's something, the board has an appetite to do, number one, because it's increasing taxes, albeit it's increasing a sin tax, but it's still a tax. I don't, I, I don't know whether, I don't know the tenor of the community, whether they vote in favor of it or not. But there certainly would be a benefit to the opportunity to do some more work in the Park and Recreation Department.
So it would be a special revenue fund specifically for Parks and Rec?
It could be.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be. It could be, it could be for streets. It could be for economic development. You could set it up where you're going to do it for affordable housing. You could do it for any number of reasons, but to go to the ballot, you really want to have an identified, we're going to take this money and we're going to spend it on X.
Because they want to know what you're going to do with it.
They want to, if, if we just said, yeah, we want to go grab, you know, $250,000, we're going to dump it in the general fund, I think there would be less of a, a chance that people would vote in favor of it.
Yeah, and having that fund also holds accountability. You're doing it for a purpose and you're applying it for that equal purpose.
So I would be okay with trying to move forward with a cigarette tax and marijuana tax if it was specifically dedicated to parks.
I agree. It, it needs to be dedicated towards something. Because, yeah, like, like Jim said, if it's in the general fund, most, yeah, people won't know what it's for, so they're more likely to vote no.
Well, I don't know what rifle is. I know Newcastle has a cigarette tax. I know Glenwood has a huge cigarette tax. Carbondale has a huge cigarette tax. So, I mean, it, we wouldn't have to, it wouldn't want to go as aggressive as some of them are, maybe. That way, it still keeps it not being, but I mean, there's, with that. And then I know marijuana-wise, our total tax is, is one of the lowest in the state.
Yeah.
Versus the tax, the cumulative tax that all, all the communities are charging currently.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to it, but yeah, but I remember when Newcastle and Glenwood, you know, imposed their cigarette taxes, because I was working at the liquor store on the corner. And, and cigarette sales actually went up there when that happened. Because everybody would come in there and, you know, complain about, you know, the new taxes up there. Then they're like, well, I'm, I'm just going to buy them down here now. But I don't know if the increase in sales offsets what we can generate by a tax.
So the one, the one downside of a cigarette tax is, is, and I was talking to Dave Reynolds about this, the manager over in Newcastle, is that they're now seeing declining revenues. Because people are smoking less. And so they've seen a decline in terms of the revenues that they initially got from their cigarette tax.
Well, when people also just plan better now and they purchase them somewhere else, if they can.
Well, maybe.
To an extent.
To an extent.
But smokers are going to buy it regardless. I mean, it's the way it is.
Any other towns around us have a marijuana tax?
I think they, well, Newcastle does not have any.
They don't have any at all.
They don't have any shops.
Rifle does.
Rifle does. They impose a tax.
DeBeck and Parachute, all three of them have a 5% excise tax.
And Glenwood also all have a tax.
Do you know how much that is? Just rough, I mean, something to know before we, just to kind of compare.
Well, you know, I think it varies. I think we can get that information pretty easily.
Be kind of nice to know what other towns have and stuff, so we brought this forward. We kind of know. So we're just not shooting at a number out in the, you know?
Right. And, and if, you know, if you want us to bring this back for discussion at the next one. Because there is actual steps that we have to take that Clerk McIntyre can go through where we have to declare that we're actually going to go to the ballot. And that would be part of the process that we'd get everything set.
I'd like to see it come back, but I'd like to have a general idea of what other towns are charging, you know, for the cigarette and marijuana. Just, so we kind of have some number in our minds so we're not just throwing a number out there without knowing.
And, you know, certainly, we wouldn't want to be the highest tax out there.
Well, that's what I mean, yeah.
Tells people to go somewhere else.
Yep. And I do think having a dedicated thing like having it for Parks and Rec would make it understandable for people to make it more, more likely to pass.
I do have some concerns about foisting another tax on the residents of Silt, though. We, we update, we upped their water fees last year. Now we're hitting them. We call it a sin tax. It's a special use. It's a limited group. But they're still residents of our community. I think we need to be careful about what their economic standing is and how this will affect them.
It's not kind of like a liquor tax. You don't have to go buy the alcohol. You don't have to buy the cigarettes, so.
In theory, again, it's, it's a sin tax, but it's still a tax on the citizens of the town. I'd like to see it come back for further discussion, but I just want us to be cautious about it. At a certain point, it's, it's death by a thousand cuts.
If I could maybe add something for you to chew on between now and then. I did talk with the county clerk the other day, and she mentioned that the November ballot is already two pages long. She kind of, when I told her that we might be considering opting into the ballot this year, she says, well, you can, but you might want to consider the fact that it is so huge and it may not play to your advantage. Plus, we didn't budget anything for an election this year, which we could certainly make that happen. But one thought of is if we do wait and take this to the voters next year, gives us a lot more time to educate the voters on what we want to do and the benefits that it would bring to the town and not be such a, a hit on them this year with already having the water increases on them as well.
Well, it allows us for more time on planning on it versus just trying to shove something, shove something out quick.
Yeah, I want to learn more. I don't have a, a preference one way or the other right now. I just wanted to mention it, that there are other fees and other taxes that are being put upon these people. And we know the income levels of our community generally. We just want to be sensitive to that.
And as I said, it's better to go to a ballot when you have done enough education and gotten the word out there, explain what we're going to be spending the money on, to get to the point where we have a pretty good idea that we're going to get a yes. Because if we go out to the ballot and we get a no.
Good luck trying to do it again.
Well, it's harder to do it the next time.
Well, it's also, I mean, it's money spent getting it on the ballot that we aren't getting back. And it's also, you lose, you could lose some goodwill.
Yep.
I'm fine with waiting a year.
Would we do it in '24, '25, or '26? Wait, because '25 really wouldn't be nuts. If you don't have enough on there, people don't vote. So we'd wait till '26 when you have a.
Well, you've got the opportunity.
Well, '25, we have some trustees that are up, so that'll be on the ballot.
Yeah, we have an election next year anyway, so it'd be a good time to tag team with that.
But, yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think that's all part of the, the discussion process as we move forward. If this is something that you're interested in exploring, there's no set time that we, set timeline that we have to follow. Point is getting it done correctly so that when we do actually go to the ballot, people understand what we're asking. And they, they can make an informed decision. Hopefully, it's an election that there's enough people that are going to come vote. But, you know, Jerry, your trustee Seifert, you're entirely correct. Off-year elections have less voter turnout.
And on the other side, though, it might be a way to get more turnout.
Might be.
Might be a way to get more people there, yeah.
Because you're not voting on just one thing. You're voting on something that's going to affect their pocketbooks and stuff.
If they're passionate about this issue.
Or they're, or they're passionate about the community and they want to have the extra income for the Parks and Rec.
All right, we'll, we'll bring back some additional information and we can open the discussion with no agenda on whether we're moving forward this year or next year or the year after that. But we'll, we'll keep the, the conversation moving forward. So there's, and, and we will talk about this next month also. But one area that we will likely be looking at is impact fees. We are staring down, you know, the potential of a new police station. You know, either new town facilities, public work facilities. We may want to look at a public facilities impact fee to help offset some of those costs. Now, there's pros and cons about a public facilities impact fee because, again, it increases the cost of building a residential unit. And that's maybe considered a little counterproductive when you're talking about affordable housing. But it is a revenue stream that's out there that we may want to explore. And we'll delve into that a little bit more when we talk space needs.
Should we talk about the mayor's newsletter?
Mayor's newsletter? You missed that part. I have a newsletter?
You do now.
Monthly.
Monthly?
Yeah.
You may have been opted in.
Which May, or which month, I guess I should say.
Of what year?
Of what year, yeah.
It was part of that sort of expanding outreach to the community. There was like coffee with the administrator, with the trustee, or maybe with a P&amp;Z person on occasion. That sort of thing is part of that larger social engagement strategy, for lack of a better term.
Yeah. And that gets, that gets to, you know, kind of the community outreach side and improving our view, you know, the view out there.
The view out there.
I mean, I have to go up and down Main Street and meet with people and introduce myself. I still have a lot of that to do. But there are a whole host of things that we can do to improve our participation.
Participation, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know specifically that a newsletter is the solution, but I like the idea of increasing engagement. I just don't know if there's enough content. Nothing personal against you. It's like, what are you going to write about next week?
Next week, right, yeah.
And the week after that, and, you know, 49 more times.
I used to write a two-pager every week.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah. And it was, and it was, and it was just, it wasn't necessarily broadly distributed to the community, but it was to all the elected officials so that they had something to talk about to people when they were talking about it. And, I mean, it's something we could do, but it's, you know, it would be, you know, a paragraph or two of what Public Works accomplished this week. It would be a paragraph of what PD may have done, you know, something interesting going on. But it, you know, something like that. But that's something that we could, I don't know that we would want to just, in this day and age, limit it. Back then, I mean, Al Gore hadn't created the internet yet. So we didn't really have that out there. Now, we have a much easier way to distribute material. So we could do something every two weeks or once a month where we're really putting a beefier content piece out there.
Okay.
Maybe it's not just the mayor.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe P&amp;Z, other trustees would have an opportunity to, to write a little blurb that could be included in your newsletter, something like that, where different voices are heard, different topics are covered, and no one feels it's their singular responsibility to have to come up with new content every 29 days.
And you, you could, you know, we could introduce employees, too. You know, highlighted employee, or highlight a group of employees.
I like that idea of having some diversity in the content and, and different people responsible at different times. Again, at, at certain point, it's going to become a burden.
Yeah, but you have to do it.
And you can't go on vacation. Can't miss your due date.
Talk about my next vacation. I have bored comments?
Again, generally, I think it's a great idea.
No, I think it is a great idea. And I do like the ideas of setting up the, you know, coffee and stuff like that.
I, I enjoy those YouTube videos that, was it the website group that was, they were making it? That they would feature each store. I haven't seen new ones, and the content and the buildup of those YouTube videos were really great. Maybe try to have a push to continue making those and getting those out there, featuring other businesses that maybe are not just well-known. And start with the downtown, continue with the downtown, but then expand around to other businesses that people don't know about. I love, yeah, I thought those were really high-quality and it's a great way to promote the website as well.
Okay.
I like it.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything more on that budget side?
Not right now, no.
Okay. Then, kind of a quick, quick jump over to the housing. You had asked us to kind of come up with what we thought a timeline might look like with deliverables moving forward. And a lot of this, you know, may, a lot of it is subject to change once we get a consultant on board to actually do the housing needs assessment. But we figured that kind of the housing needs assessment and community outreach would be done sometime towards the end of this year, December-ish, with kind of a draft housing plan beginning in January of '25. Says '24 on the, on my memo, but, you know, I have a hard time believing we're halfway through the year anyway. And then, you know, updating Title 16, 17, and the comp plan through about this time next year. And then adopting a final strategy sometime July, August of next year. That's kind of what we figured would be the timeline. I think we'll probably be starting some of the community outreach even sooner than October, simply because we'll have some opportunities. I talked to Superintendent Grumley this morning, and we're probably going to try to do some community outreach at their opening, you know, their orientation week activities. Because that's a good opportunity to talk to a lot of folks that come in. Because orientation for, you know, young, school-aged children usually brings the parents out. And so it'll be a good opportunity to get outreach for the community park project as well as the housing. But that's kind of the timeline that we thought we'd kind of lay out. We'll know a little bit more once we get the RFP responses back from whomever might want to do our housing needs assessment and study work.
Thanks for the timeline. I think, I think I was the one who asked for it. So thank you for all the hard work. And I also like the idea that it's, it's an aggressive timeline. It, it underscores the priority for us of, of having an affordable housing policy soon. Not someday maybe, soon.
If I could figure out how to have this done by the end of the year, I'd have it done by the end of the year. But I think there'd be a revolt on the poor people that have decided to join the Town Code Committee.
Is there any type of timeline to take, to gain access to Prop 1, 2, 3 funding?
Is there any type of timeline to take, um, to gain access to Prop one, two, three funding for planning for housing? Or can we just come up with a plan, let them know and then access the funds?
We've got, uh, we've got the grant right now to do the, uh, housing needs assessment.
Seventy-five thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so we've got that grant. Once we get through this process, then we're gonna be able to access some of those other dollars. Most of these, most of these grants that are out there, we have to get this step done first before they're gonna accept giving us any money.
So I just, I just wanna let everyone, I missed the last meeting, so I missed this conversation, but I just wanna let everyone know going into this that I am probably the biggest opponent of municipalities forcing rules upon developers for affordable housing. You're taking the burden from an employer and putting it on a developer and saying, this business is free to make the biggest profit margins they want, but this developer needs to build an affordable unit that can be sold at this much. And there's millions of people that are all about the affordable housing, but if they bought a house for three hundred thousand and they lived in it for ten years and it now appraises for four hundred thousand, they're not putting it on the market for three hundred thousand. They're selling it for four hundred thousand, taking their money and saying, someone out here needs to fix this affordable housing program. So I think using codes, restrictions or requirements to force developers to have affordable housing uses or to fix the problem isn't the right way to go about it.
You have a valid point, yeah.
And I think that all folds into the strategy.
It folds into the strategy, but I don't wanna.
Right.
Go into this conversation with, with, you know, everyone shocked when I'm, I'm not a fan of, of forcing people to do. The, the group that's responsible is not the group that's fixing the problem.
Just to throw something in there, I talked to a developer, a money manager. He, what he does is investments. And it comes to this affordable housing, it, it's, what's really killing affordable housing right now is rent is just stupid. They're, they're making a lot of money. Rental market is just crazy. So like you said, let's say I build a fourplex. I sell it, I can make five, I can make five hundred thousand on that fourplex. I rent it at twenty-five hundred a unit, ten thousand a month, ten years, I'm gonna make one point two million dollars and I can depreciate it. So why am I gonna sell? And that, until we can get the rental, it's gonna be hard, affordable housing. It's just gonna be tough right now because developers, they can build a fourplex way cheaper than to build four houses and they're making. And, and I, I can't blame them. I mean, I'm not gonna be out there and tell them, well, sorry, but you're gonna take a loss at that. Is your company gonna take a loss?
Right. That's.
You know, and, and, and that's, and, and he had a good point. I mean, we talked quite a bit and that's, he said, it's not just Silt. It's everywhere. We're one of the highest ones in the nation right now. It's just tough. Glenwood, four thousand dollars. Rental property is just crazy. They're making a lot of money and they're not gonna give that up to sell right now. It's gonna be tough.
Yeah.
That's right. I don't think it's our responsibility to tell that person they can't make that money.
Right.
If there's a, you know, mostly, I'm gonna say it's employers in the valley with over a hundred employees that need affordable housing. So those businesses should be building that housing. And I know you don't like the process of, you control where they work, their, their health insurance and, and where they live, but they're the ones responsible for the problem. So unless they're gonna fund the product, the project on the back end, on the front end, somehow until those employers put skin in the game, it's not the developer's problem to, to eat that cost.
No, you're right. I mean, affordable housing is a lot easier said than done.
Yeah, and it's, and it's, it's not right now, you know, I was talking to Lumberyard today. It's, you know, individual housing starts a slow, but multiple family is, is up because of the rental.
Yeah.
And he said, you know, I could sell them, make money, but he says, then I have that capital gain or that money. Says, I rented out for ten years. I'll make one point two million dollars and I can depreciate the whole thing off. So, I mean, you can't blame them. That's a money game. It, you know, you can't blame them for not wanting to make money.
Right.
If I was in that game as an investor, I would, you know. But yeah, it's, 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 it's what's gonna kill us for affordable housing is just the rental market right now. Until we can get that under control, and we're not going to. I mean, out at the roundabout, what, twenty-five hundred bucks for, you know, it's just, it's crazy.
Crazy, yeah.
I mean, you got people out in the country that are putting their big houses up instead of putting them up for sale, they're renting them out for four grand a month. I mean, they don't have to pay capital gains or nothing right now. They said, you know, we're making our payment plus pocketing two, three thousand a month. And you can't blame them. People are paying. And the trouble is, people are paying it. Until people don't pay that.
It's gonna, yeah. I do think there is a conversation to be had about how to make building more affordable.
Yep.
And how to, you know, I think ADUs as being a, a use by right on most properties is a good way to go about that. But it, it turns into the same situation. You let someone build an ADU, they put two hundred and fifty thousand into it and they rent it for twenty-five hundred bucks a month. So it's not gonna, it's not, it's not fixing that problem. Like Jerry says, until you have the supply, demand equals out, you're not gonna solve, solve this problem.
I mean, you know, everybody made fun of the tiny homes, but it was a first step for a lot of people and it's a great deal.
And they're full.
That's affordable housing.
And they're full.
You know, we've got, we've got people renting storage units from us that sold houses in Stony Ridge for five hundred thousand because they're gonna retire shortly. They paid cash, two hundred thousand over there, pocketed some money for right now until the time comes when they can move on. I mean, that's what, what's gonna be affordable housing is something like across the river. I don't know how, what else to say. It's gonna have to be something like that.
So yeah, creative ways. I mean, tiny home community like that, but make it so that they can actually sell off that piece of land. Make that lot an actual tangible piece of property that someone can buy. So you're not, you're not renting it from somebody else.
And that aligns with the creative design features to help save costs. And once we go through the process of, you know, figuring out just the house needs assessment, having the code review for those creative purpose, different things, and we have the planning. I was just, I'll mention that later in my comments as well, but, uh, once we have those steps in place, uh, there are legislative appropriation and federal dollars, American Rescue Plan funds that can be assessed. Uh, there, there are organizations like the Regional Housing Alliance and land funding for civil design. So it's like taking one step at a time and once those steps are taking place, I like the diversity approach to it, having those options or features being different because then we are able to access those sort, those funding sources. So now if we can help a developer, that three hundred thousand dollars still going to, they're, they're real dollars, okay? But now the developer through one of those funding sources that I've mentioned, because they know municipalities are working in conjunction. We have a prop, you know, one, two, three, that it's making those funds accessible to those parties. So now the developer on that one point two million dollar is actually out of his own dollars, going to put down nine hundred. So he's not, and those additional three hundred thousand dollar funds, just as an example, is being accessed differently. Then that can be translated into the purchasing cost, which would decrease the purchasing price for the, for the buyer. So it is possible. It's good to keep an open mindset and, you know, to approach in a way that, yes, we are not going after the developer. Let's go ahead and find a solution that will benefit the parties in place. That's gonna work with the complete plan, that's going to allow the developer to offset costs and make money. People in business should make money, right? And then accessing those funding sources that are available out there, especially now with this being like a high topic CML priority item and then moving things forward that way. It's possible. It's there and step by step, housing needs, code review, and you mentioned something else. Um, the housing needs assess, assessment, code review, and then coming back to us and then deciding, uh, you know, how diverse we want the housing market to be. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, we're late.
We're late. We're three minutes late.
Do you wanna take a couple of minutes before we go into the regular session or do you wanna just go straight on?
Two minutes, three minutes, four minutes, five minutes, okay.
Sorry, guys. My fault. I lost track of time.